A council workshop, but nevertheless, let me call and convene that. And we'll go from there. This is a scheduled and called Greer City Council Workshop. We are meeting today on February 26th, 2025 for a council workshop pertaining to downtown parking. And Ms. Katrina Woodruff.
Woodruff, thank you.
Will lead us in that conversation. And we appreciate you handling that for us. So with that, we'll get started.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Last fall, the city hired Walker Consultants to come onsite and conduct a parking analysis for the downtown area. This included two separate site visits, community stakeholder engagement meetings, and a public input survey. Joining us this afternoon is Jen Corbett from Walker Consultants to present the findings. Jen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Katrina. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for the pleasure of speaking in front of you today. We'll just jump right in here. As Katrina sort of mentioned here, or the agenda subject matter suggests, really, this is going to be about our findings and observations. We have a separate report that's been delivered in draft format to staff with our recommendations at this point. But really, we're here today just to talk about the high-level observations and facts that we've sort of gleaned from interaction with stakeholders and spending time with boots on the ground here in Greer this past fall. So we'll move on here. For those of you that may be aware, the study area really is shown on this particular slide here. Give or take 20 blocks, the blocks aren't exactly square and aligned, but I think when we did sort of the loose count of that, this was the boundaries that more or less came up here. All the way down to the rail line down there at Moore Street on the south, Line Street over on the east, and sort of south and north on the west, and Arlington on the very north there. But the main focus really is going to be in the Greer Station area here, with a little bit of that activity as it sort of moves north above Point Set where the new parking deck is, and some of the newer development that's occurring in Greer. We did some project goals when we started with this opportunity here. Kind of see them on the tenant flags here. Obviously, we wanted to create a community-supported vision. We didn't want to say that just because the next town overdid this, that it should just rubber stamp fit right on top of Greer. We wanted to make sure we had that input from as many of the folks possible and sort of downtown stakeholders and residents in that matter. The goal here really is, the question that everybody asked, you know, do we have the right amount of parking? And that consists of off-street parking, surface-structured, as well as the on-street parking that is surrounding your area there. Parking management is sort of a big question on the table. When we come forth with our recommendations, there really needs to be a champion to sort of carry this sort of parking program or parking plan forward. If we just deliver your recommendations and nothing's done with it, or we don't have anybody to sort of carry that forward, it's just going to sort of sit there as it is, if you will. Whenever possible, we like to complement transit initiatives. I know in the Carolinas, we're sort of limited with those transit opportunities there, but we do recognize that there are some options available, and particularly the sort of golf cart shuttle, that's the Greer Shuttle Program that's in play is something we want to build upon. And then lastly, that sort of management strategy of, you know, more or less getting people out of their cars and not having it be so car-centric. We recognize that people will highly depend on using their car to get to this commercial downtown area, but once they're here, it's the idea of sort of parking that car and not moving it a couple times between destinations in the downtown. That sort of "park once" strategy that you hear is sort of a best practice with a lot of communities. As far as the schedule, as Katrina said, we started this back in the fall. September, we kicked it off, you know, right after Labor Day, and then, of course, we immediately ran into Hurricane Helene, which was an interesting... We were here a couple days prior to the storm coming through, and I was privileged enough to be holed up in the hotel room, watching the storm as it came through Greer, which was, you know, scary and safe at the same time. But we got past that piece, and we got things moving again with some additional stakeholder meetings around that time in October. Some of them, because not all folks were able to attend the stakeholder meetings, we had some virtual meetings. Nowadays, we do a lot of stuff on camera through our computers, and so we were able to conduct a lot of those meetings that way as well, too. We came back and did a second round of data collection, because that first round, again, was right at the onset of Helene coming through town, and we felt that that wasn't really going to give us a good indication of what was going on. So the second round was in November, a typical Friday/Saturday weekend in November. There weren't any capacity special events occurring at that time. We really just wanted to get a good look at what typical parking and mobility and life looks like in downtown Greer. And then, as we got past that, we started the analysis and report development, which we delivered this, a couple of documents here in December, and here we are today, sort of walking through those findings and observations. So the metrics, we all like metrics. So the parking inventory really in the district consists of a pretty even split on the off-street real estate between what the city controls as public inventory, about 875 there, and then the private off-street locations. These consist of locations like churches and private lots that support private businesses. And then, the on-street total is 147, most of that on-street inventory being delineated with the little white lines and boxes or markings in the case of the Main Street. So actually delineated parking comes to 147 on-street. When we did our site visits, the goal was really to determine what the peak utilization looks like. And we use heat sensitivity color-coded maps, red, obviously, equivalent of hot or capacity, and then all the way down that color spectrum from orange, yellow, to green. And green generally means there isn't really a parking problem. There's a wealth of inventory that's available on that. So when we did that peak, which was that Friday in November, November the 8th, sort of that evening dinner, meal period hour, 6:30 to 8 o'clock, the on-street was at capacity 98%. No real big sort of misunderstanding there. Off-street collectively, public and private, was about 43%. So about half of that inventory was utilized for sort of a combined overall 48%. So this focus area is what we consider sort of the southwest viewpoint here. This is everything west of Main Street. You do see a lot of privately-owned and operated inventory in this map. As we sort of shift through that, now we sort of come east of Main Street over to Greer City Hall here, and the venues there. And then, lastly, we'll jump down and show the off-street demand. Again, the red, keep in mind, the red are the capacity locations. You don't really see any orange. You see a little bit of green and a little bit of yellow in there. The pink shaded area, I think we all know, that's the sort of the grassy area over there, sort of east of Depot Street. Interesting, we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through the presentation here, but there were a lot of folks that do utilize that for parking, particularly on the peak evening hours. And then, lastly, is no big surprise here, the on-street completely red, as I said, 98%. The red lines represent all of that inventory, as it's known today, as we recorded it on street. Those same percentages are sort of recurring through the slides there. We did a turnover analysis, and I think this is always interesting when you go into a downtown sort of district area there. This is a strong indicator of, you know, what's actually happening. Are folks parking for extended periods of time on your street here? And so when we do a turnover analysis, we, boots on the ground, record license plates every couple of hours. So we're just literally walking the streets. When we see that same license plate in that same spot, we make a note of that, so on and so forth. So our time ranges were about 11 to 1 during the day, and then we did it again from 2 to 4 in the afternoon, and then we did it from 6 to 8 at night. We really want to see, are those spaces turning over in those windows? So you can see in the district, the little red circles there with the white numbers in the center of them, that represents the number of vehicles that were parked across multiple sessions beyond, say, a comfortable two-hour window or three-hour window in that sense. So that's always an eye-opener for a lot of people, because there's a lot of perceived information that maybe business owners are parking in those spaces, or employees are parking in those spaces, really sort of taking that away from visitor access. But really, a good baseline information to begin to make some determinations there. So a little bit on the stakeholder meetings, I'll sort of go through each of the meetings that we hosted. These first couple of meetings, again, were a couple days, or the day before the storm came through back in September. We met with the faith-based communities. Some of this, you'll see, I've highlighted a couple in bold text there, but more detailed findings are available in the report that we provided there. But in this case, this group said, you know, additional parking is needed. A big question came up about information or wayfinding, directing people to the parking deck as it exists today. We got the sentiment that, you know, it's very difficult. You can see it from a distance, but you just don't know where the entrance to that deck is. And what we usually coach and help a lot of communities do is really develop more of a parking wayfinding, trailblazing, or pathway system that will enable that motorist to identify with a sign that has a brand on it, and follow that brand, sort of breadcrumb trail, to the appropriate entrance of the parking deck. Staying in the Hampton Inn, we watched a lot of people pull into the Hampton Inn there, thinking they could get into the garage, and unfortunately had to do the nine-point turn, and turn around, and back out of the entry point there. It's very difficult to sort of find that true entrance to the deck, sort of on the backside there. We did hear some input from the Heritage Museum folks. They were concerned about, you know, having access for buses and groups to attend the museum on museum field trip days. Obviously, that portion of Main Street is a very busy portion of Main Street that I don't believe actually has any formalized inventory or drop-off sort of area there. So those were just some of the highlights from that group. Hospitality groups, these were sort of the hotel groups, if you will. Obviously, they noticed that the large lot there where McCleskey Pharmacy is, obviously, it's a wealth of inventory there across the street from the deck. It was interesting, the depot operator had shared some concerns about the height of his interpretation of the plans for the parking deck, sort of in the south end of the district there, was concerned about the height of that. Not sure why we highlighted that, but it was a prevailing thought that kept coming up during that meeting there, and almost wouldn't go away. This idea of some of the restaurants needing sort of valet opportunities, to where restaurant patrons could simply pull up in front of any of the number of restaurants that you have in town, and sort of use that inventory in front of the restaurant as a valet zone, and then, of course, either parking the car in the deck, or parking the car in the McClesley Lot, or somewhere adjacent to that was a good opportunity that came up there. The shuttle hours was a big topic that came up. A lot of folks had said, "Well, I like it when I can use it, but it almost doesn't run as consistently as I would like it to run." There's some dependency issues there on the scheduling of that. And then, some folks were saying, "Well, it doesn't always work after 8 o'clock at night, so I may use it to get to my destination, but after I have dinner, then I'm stuck walking back to where I parked, or wherever I started my journey that night." So again, a good resource, but I think with some consistency, it would probably serve better needs to have that shuttle on a more regular basis. And then, loading zone was a big one that came up. And when we talk about loading zones, there's really two types of it. There's commercial loading with sort of the big tractor-trailer trucks, or the larger box trucks, and then there's the small business need for loading zone. I may go to Costco and pick up materials, and I need to bring those materials back to my business, and I really don't have an opportunity to park and move that inventory into my business. So it's sort of a combination of loading zone need there in that case. All right. Some of the other business groups, this was the very last meeting I think we had on that Thursday before Helene came through. Again, there was, they were interested in moving more towards a time-limited parking program in the commercial, the core area there, something that's really measured to keep turnover happening on a regular basis. They too said better advertising of where the parking assets are. Right now, you have a very functional arrival sign, that's the light blue pillar sign that says "public parking" at each of your entrances there. It is a very common theme, a common brand, and it's functional, but we think that there could be some more that you could do for that, to let folks know that it's a city of Greer asset, and not just a public parking asset. Some opportunities there. I think, well, the other one on there was wayfinding at the alley of East Point Set for access to the garage. We did this kind of foot trail ourselves a number of times, where we left the garage, and instead of walking Main to the intersection of Main and Point Set, we sort of walked that direct line, if you will, cutting through that little alleyway or that paseo next to the ice cream store that's there, and found that it was a nice pathway there. We didn't have to sort of really go out of our way, it was more of a straight line. So that came up as a topic as well. We talked with the Chamber. This was, again, a virtual meeting after the fact. It occurred in late October. They recognized that a lot of folks, a lot of employees are actually parking in a lot of these core spaces, and they just don't simply leave for lunch or a meeting, because they're afraid that they'll lose that space, that prime curbside space, when they come back from lunch. We all know, I mean, it's not a very difficult walk to the Jason Street Deck from Greer Station, but to them, that was their perception, that was their acceptance, that's what they really wanted. So interesting to sort of hear that sort of behavioral response come out of that. Chamber wasn't opposed to the time-limited parking there. They too had concerns about wayfinding to the parking deck. And then there was this concept that they struggle, I guess, with their Chamber of Commerce every second Wednesday, where folks are coming, business folks are coming from other parts of the city to attend this midday meeting, and it's very difficult for them to find parking. I think it's all very interesting that you've got a large Jason Street parking deck nearby, and it's a couple blocks away, and yet that, from a behavioral standpoint, that's almost too far, too much for somebody to have to walk. And I get it, in the summer, in August, July, it can get pretty hot, and if you're dressed up, and you don't want to necessarily be uncomfortable by the time you get to the meeting, but it's still, it's not that. It's not that arduous. But anyway, that was interesting to hear that sort of feedback come back from them. Couple of the other businesses within the district there, specifically, you'll see a lot of the same recurring comments about the shuttle, time-limited parking, hours of operations for the Greer Station Shuttle as well. And of course, I think that it was Wild Ace that was concerned about loading zones. I think they have a lot greater needs for goods and services to be delivered to their business. We had a couple of photos of some of the bigger sort of semi-delivery trucks, if you will, parked in some real interesting spots that's shared in the report itself. Lastly, I think on here, yeah, we talked to the Parkview Apartments folks, and Hampton by Hilton as well. The concern for Parkview Apartments was the sort of overflow coming into their property from folks that, you know, were patronizing the nearby businesses there. Again, I think that particular street there, next to their business there, becomes very sort of congested in the sense when there is large events that are occurring nearby there. The Cannon Center is what I'm speaking of there. And the Hampton was concerned about, you know, sort of the access control system getting in and out of the garage. I'm not sure why that really became an issue with them, but that was one thing that they said, you know, if there was an opportunity to sort of redesign what that is, they would welcome that sort of conversation. We didn't press it too much further, because we were sort of short on time in our meeting with that, at that particular time there. Select Restaurant, I think, is the other one that's there on the top. You know, they were very concerned that they didn't see a lot of sort of long-term parking on the streets in the Greer Station area there. And they didn't feel that implementing a paid parking strategy was worthwhile necessarily, that they would be open to more of a time-limited parking program, but didn't feel that it was right necessarily right now to introduce a paid parking solution. Loading zones were a big issue with them as well, too. All right. And again, you'll see more detailed responses of that in the actual report. This next sort of phase here was the digital electronic survey that we put out early November, and it ran through early December, so about 30 days on that. There were some questions designed specifically to sort of understand what some of the real challenges might be for folks in and out of the district, if you will. We had 561 responses, that exact number. Majority of the respondents were actual residents of the city of Greer. We did have a lot of folks from the larger, sort of at-county, if you will, the two counties that saddled Greer. Of the responses, the reasons for coming down, most of the people, no big surprise here, restaurants and bars, scheduled special events, sort of citywide events, if you will. Retail shopping was the distant third there, and entertainment sort of saddled with it as far as recreation as well, too, using your park space here. This was the question that we always like to get people to come to this determination of what is really their priority when it comes to sort of a triangle of options, if you will. We call it the parking triangle. And those are, option one, if you could choose between affordable and easy-to-find, but maybe less convenient, would you choose that? The second one is, maybe it's convenient, adjacent to where I need to be, and easy-to-find, but less affordable, meaning that there's a fee associated with that parking scenario there. And then, the last option there is that it's affordable, generally free as it is today, and convenient, but difficult to find, which is more closely aligned, I think, with what Greer has in play today. But majority of the respondents were affordable and easy-to-find, but less convenient. So what that really tells us, regardless of whether or not they're following what they say, is that they don't mind parking sort of in a less convenient or remote, the Jason Street Deck, and actually walking to their destinations. It's real interesting to see that. They weren't necessarily practicing it, from what we could see from the utilization counts, but it was interesting that that's, when you put that on the table, in that framework, that's where their priorities lie there. Again, the question, how far are you willing to walk to your destination? Majority of the folks said one to two blocks, two to three minutes. Then sort of the next one was three to four blocks, four to five minutes. I think the Jason Street Deck more or less really falls in those two categories there. So folks really don't have a problem with walking that amount of distance to their What really discourages you from using the Jason Street Deck? The number one answer there, that they prefer on-street and surface parking. There is, you know, some behavioral safety, I think, involved in that. Folks like this idea of being able to park in a convenient, open airspace. I think a lot of folks sort of tend to get intimidated by parking garages, just because they're confusing by functional design, layout, things like that. But the majority of folks seemed to respond in that. The number two there was, you know, the parking deck wasn't necessarily convenient to their destination, is according to what they said. We asked, how much time would be acceptable duration to meet downtown needs? And they go, and this is a question that pertains to, is a two-hour limit acceptable? Three-hour, four-hour, no limit at all? And two hours was, you know, the resounding number one answer there for folks. Greater than 50% of the respondents felt that two hours was enough to shop, walk around, shop again, maybe grab a meal, somewhere in there, plenty of time to do that. We really wanted to understand how folks, what was their awareness of the Greer Station Shuttle operation? The number one answer there, as you can see, "I do not use the service, but it would likely meet my needs." Thought that was interesting. Kind of the number two there, I think, is, "I'm not aware of the Greer Station operation itself," down there at the bottom there. So, you know, there's some interesting responses there, and that sort of tells us, you know, how well is it really promoted? How, you know, again, is it related to the frequency? I think as folks walk around in the downtown area, and they see the shuttle, they tend to say, "Well, okay, maybe I'll try that next time." There's some visual cues that could sort of enhance that opportunity. What barriers or reasons discourage you from walking farther? And the number one answer there was, "I prefer to park as close as I can." Perhaps no big surprise there. Weather does become a situation during certain high-temperature seasons, or rainy seasons, if you will. And then, of course, folks really like the free parking option. Obviously, I think if it wasn't free, they would probably feel more inclined to have to walk farther to where perhaps it was free. And this is sort of an interesting geometric here, if you will. Sometimes when you let your analysts get a hold of something, they like to be creative when they present information here. But the way this works, the question is, you know, again, ranking what's the most important to you when parking in the downtown area? And the number one, or number one and number two, as you can see, that two being the lowest number there in this case, proximity to destination, certainty that parking will be available was a close second there. And if you sort of follow that circle all the way around, sort of from clockwise direction, you get to the 5.1 there on the top left, that use of private business parking lots after hours and on weekends. That was not as important as we thought it would be. This one, public right-of-way space is limited in historic downtown Greer Station, and we asked folks to rank the uses based on what they believe are the most important infrastructure needs. The number one answer there was sidewalks. And then, of course, a couple of the close seconds there were green space and landscaping, and then curbside vehicle parking. Those seem to be sort of the top priorities. That's not uncommon when you get into any sort of downtown area there. Folks like to be able to find a place to park, and they like to be able to walk around as well. I think the last one we've got here on the survey responses is, if curbside, excuse me, if curbside parking inventory were reduced to accommodate any non-parking items listed, what role should the city of Greer play? Their number one answer was, create more off-street parking options through leasing and acquisition efforts. Create more off-street parking options through shared parking agreements. Again, that's the use of private surface parking areas or private assets after hours. And then, the third one there was this idea of redesigning on-street parking for angled parking instead of parallel parking where applicable. And that's, sometimes that's easier said than done, because of your geometrics when you look at your right-of-way. You can't always take a parallel parking area and turn it into an angled parking area. Oftentimes, if you do that, you're sort of eliminating parking on one side of the street to enable that traffic to still navigate that roadway there. So I realize that was just kind of a brief kind of overview of the findings that we found, and sort of the observations at this point. So I think at this point, we want to open it, maybe for some discussion, perhaps, from the Council. Happy to field any questions or additional concerns that you might have.
Sure. Council floor is open for discussion or questions.
Seems like a very thorough overview of the parking situation. Covered a lot of bases, yeah.
On the parallel parking aspect, that was something brought up to fairly recently. In this report, or based off your study, is there an ideal location, based off of, you know, looking at turnover and XYZ? How would we go about of getting down that path? Where would valet parking work, best areas, where you're not encumbering spaces that may be likely for folks to be in?
Sure.
How do we take this study, I guess, to the next to implement?
We do a lot of sort of curb management to sort of kind of next step activities with communities and cities after we present this information. And this idea that, you know, historically, the curb has always been that, "Don't mess with my curb parking, I need it." It's critical, not only to me as the patron, but me as the business owner in that sense. And what we're starting to see a lot of communities do is sort of along the lines of what Greer is sort of shaping to do, of, you know, you built the Jason Street Deck, there's consideration for building another deck. And when you do that, you're really more or less pushing more of that visit to the deck, if you will. The curb really should be designed for that sort of quick access. If I'm just running in to pick something up, you know, very brief sort of interaction there. And what we also see happening is a lot of that curb inventory going away in exchange for things like more delivery access, more passenger pickup and drop-off, which is one solution where folks don't necessarily want to walk from the Jason Street Deck. Perhaps they get dropped off in front of the restaurant or the business, and then the car gets parked in the Jason Street Deck. Similar to the lines of, you know, the restaurant valets in that sense, the goal really is to give more businesses, more people, more access to the business. And if you can do that by having available curb inventory for that access, whether I'm being dropped off, or whether I'm, the space is turning over pretty quickly, it's going to, I think your business owners are probably going to see their sort of models change a little bit. Granted, there's only so many chairs in the restaurants that you have, so you can't really affect that equation. But if you can get more turns in the restaurants, and have more people, more access to the restaurants and businesses, I think that's going to see a change. So I know I sort of danced around your question there. I don't think I gave you probably the answer we were looking at, but I do think this idea of sort of understanding where those sort of hotspots are. You've got some very nice retail merchants, you've got some very nice restaurants here, and I think, you know, start... And I think, you know, starting with that focus on where those are, can you sort of repurpose that inventory towards things like valet? We've seen communities do something where it's short-term parking during the daytime hours, but when that restaurant or business opens up at 5 o'clock in the evening, the spaces sort of get flipped to valet use. And it tends to work well, very similar to some of the commercial loading zones. And I think you've got it here in one case on Point Set to where it's a loading zone between, say, what is it, 7:00 in the morning and 11:00?
Yeah.
And then after sort of 11:00 a.m., it sort of converts back to a parking space at that time. So sort of that creative management of really understanding where those needs are. Because the do-nothing response, you just kind of continue to what's going on currently. And folks, if there's no real incentive for me to sort of think about my parking experience, I'm just going to continue to do the same thing that I've always done.
It's interesting in the report that, you know, the way downtown was designed was walkability.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of, kind of the framework around it. But then we have folks that don't want to necessarily walk to the location. But then, I think at the very end, it talked about they would rather see us lease spaces and have, you know, parking. I mean, is there a particular reason why the numbers aren't jiving with people wanting to walk to the locations? Or, I mean, is there any correlation of efficiencies there?
Well, I think a lot of it had to do with how we presented the question, right? It wasn't sort of a multi-phased question. And so if given that question in that format, I'm going to answer it that I want to be right where I want to be. I don't want to have to walk farther. Kind of interesting to see how the human behavior sort of reacted to that. I think, you know, as consumers, you know, looking at all of us in the room here, when we experience something somewhere, we want it to be well-branded, we want it to be safe, we want it to be convenient, we want it to be understandable, we want it to be clear. You know, we don't want this, you know, can I park here? Is it, am I going to get towed? Or, you know, is something going to happen to me if I park in this area? And a lot of it is just very simple of, you know, what we found, that you do a good job of sort of mapping where your public parking is, sort of just communicating that upfront and making it very clear to where all these assets are and to where, if I need quick access, I should be parking here. If I'm going to stay a little longer, I should be parking over here. This idea of if I'm an employee of a business, I need to have a parking space as well, too. There has to be sort of a dedicated area for that. So there's sort of a collection of pieces moving here in that sense.
And just from a parking plan, is there an ideal ratio between having parking garage versus on-street or surface parking? Is there like a magic number there?
There isn't. I think it, you know, when you ask that question, I think the big concern is cost. You know, surface parking to construct is anywhere from, you know, $1,500 to $2,000, $2,500 of space versus structured parking. We've seen some of the numbers there, can start at $20,000 and go up to $40,000 depending on sort of the design of the structured parking there. Structured parking obviously is going to give you a little more bang for your buck. The surface parking areas sort of present themselves as ideal redevelopment sites. And if you sort of plan and lay out your sort of Greer Station and downtown area, which I think you're doing it along the right lines, of you've got something on the north end and potentially something on the south end, and everywhere everybody wants to be in between, you know, gives that opportunity to go in either direction to those parking assets. Crossing, you know, we heard some interesting stories about crossing Point Set. We crossed it many times without any real issue. It sort of, folks were sort of coming to a slower crawl on Point Set, but then when we tried to do the same effect over on Main Street by the Heritage Museum there and the Police Department, it was a little different there. Folks were coming at a little faster clip down Main Street there. And the enhanced traffic crossing with the signalization there, push the button and the flashing lights go on scenario worked, but it didn't necessarily work at 12:00 in the afternoon when the sun's out and it's very bright and you really can't see those flashing lights. So, to answer your question, there's really not a ratio. I think it just, a lot of, from a planning approach, it makes sense to do more structured parking where you have locations of it, when you have that real estate opportunity. A lot of communities will do a hodgepodge of surface lots, but those surface lots tend to, at some point, they reach capacity, right? Where if you can build and construct upwards, you have a lot more inventory opportunity there.
I want to follow up on a couple of questions that Mr. Booker had. The last one that you just mentioned would be the recognition of the fact that our downtown is trisected by three state highways. I doubt very seriously that the vast majority of people that come to the downtown understand the dynamics of that. And it would be hard to factor in, you know, having state and county roads as well as city streets. Is there any way to help quantify that or to work with it? I know you mentioned the flashing crossings and that sort of thing. I agree. I work, you know, I work a couple of days a week at a business that's down past the museum there. And you've got an option of walking all the way up to the police station to cross the street or to cross the street where the church and the other businesses are down there. But you literally are taking your life in your hands to try and run across that sometimes. But there's no option for parking on some of those roads. So that eliminates a good bit of our parking space downtown, does it not?
It does. I mean, it creates that sort of unforeseen, unnatural barrier there. You're right, yeah.
In that sort of same vein, then, and again, I don't know that you quantify this in a study of this type, but I think it's interesting that potentially the size of the city has a bearing on how people feel about how much parking is available or where the parking is available. As we talked about this and the length of walk, you know, if I go to downtown Greenville and park in the Riverside parking garage and walk from my car to Rick Irwin's in downtown Greer, it's probably eighth of a mile. And I feel like I'm really lucky.
Yeah.
I could park down on the other side of the railroad tracks and walk to Rick Irwin's here, and it would be less time and less distance, and I feel like I've gone on a Boy Scout hike. So is that, is that real? Do we perceive because of where we are, the length of time has an effect on parking?
That's a great observation and a great point to make. From a planner perspective, I think what you'll see from human behavior is, I may not mind walking to Rick Irwin's from the railroad track if there's enough sort of activity to keep me interested in my walking trail, just like Greenville. You don't mind walking long distances in Greenville because there's a lot of stimulation and a lot of activity involved in that. And a lot of that is designed towards, you know, sort of commercial retail, not so much professional service, right? So some of your professional services businesses that are open from 8:00 to 5:00, that sort of storefront shutters, if you will, on nights and weekends, sort of taking away that activity space. Nothing against the professional service businesses in town, but that's a reality perception from somebody that may be walking the distances that you just described there. If I'm able to walk that distance and there's retail stores, there's things that may be of interest to the people that I'm with walking that distance, it certainly makes it a lot more palatable in that sense. So part of it, too, is interesting to see, you know, sort of Greer sort of, you know, evolve as it's evolving, right? You know, I think there's some great infrastructure, some great things that are going on in Greer, by all means. It's, you know, certainly a destination that I've enjoyed spending time in and being a part of everything that Greer has to offer. But I think it just, you know, continuing to build on that momentum, I think, will sort of wipe out any of those concerns that you've just sort of mentioned there. And, you know, sitting here today, we just, you know, how long is it going to take for that really perception to change, right? So there's a lot of, lot of sort of questions involved in what you've just shared there. But again, I think if it's, you know, the sidewalks are very pleasant, no problem walking that same walk as you've just described there. You know, and to me, there was quite a bit of stimulation here, but, you know, I'm not an everyday person in this, in this city like you are. So it worked for me. And I think it probably works very well for a lot of your sort of first-time visitors to Greer.
So a chicken and the egg question, then. You know, the parking garage here was part of a larger development with the hotel, and, you know, we knew that it would serve us from the backside, much of Trade Street, and we've seen, certainly seen that happen. You know, we're discussing another parking garage that will be in another part of the town that is not nearly as developed as that area is or services. Does that, does the fact that there is parking available there lend itself to more interest from businesses and commercial entities and that sort of thing? Is that an attractor or is that just people feel like that's the parking garage down in the desert?
Well, it's sort of a, there's a little bit to unpack with that concern there. I think when folks understand that there is a defined program in play, in other words, very well-managed with very, you know, designed with wayfinding and this understanding of short-term needs are handled here and longer-term needs are handled here, I think that goes a long way to attract a business here, where it's very clear. There's not this, you know, where are my employees going to park? But when that, when all those options are sort of answered or all those questions are answered, that makes it a little more palatable. So I think that concern right now is, is that perception is from a lot of people, is when I come into the Greer Station area, chances of me finding a parking spot during peak hours, peak opportunity are just nonexistent. And a lot of that may really be the result of, you know, folks parking for, you know, six, seven hours at a time and not really moving and parking where they should be to sort of free-open those spaces. If that perception changes, that, boy, now all of a sudden, I can find all sorts of inventory on the appropriate corridors here where I want to be, that can go a long way towards a well-managed program and in turn, an opportunity for a business owner to say, I want to be a part of that.
In that same, in that same vein, did you have anybody that owned up to the fact that their employees park in front of their business and leave their cars there all day long?
Nobody, no.
I can tell you where about three businesses do that.
I know license plate numbers. That's all I know, yeah. That's a good point, yeah.
Others?
Are there any, you know, getting back into the concept, how do you get public buy-in on some of these factors that you're talking about of, if there's a strategy in play? I mean, what are the buy-in mechanisms?
Well, good question. Again, when we had the stakeholder meetings, we started those meetings off with a sort of a best-practice scenario presentation, you know, sort of the what-ifs scenarios. Of course, you know, that ranges from, you know, a very advanced system with a lot of technology introduced to it, to a very simple system, or to a do-nothing approach, which would be the, you know, sort of the worst-case option perhaps. But it's, it's laying out and sort of finding people's sort of hotspots, what matters to them. And of course, just by suggesting certain scenarios, we had a lot of people sort of raise their hand, and you could tell whether they were passionate about it or not. So it's, it's a strategy that we've sort of learned just from our experiences. We do this all around sort of the southeast here. But by and large, I think we had some pretty good participation there, and you'll see some pretty good comments when you, when you look at that report there.
You mentioned the shuttle system and dependency, you know, later hours was brought up. That runs off of a, an app on your phone, and I am sure that most people that visit don't actually know about that, and we probably need to do a better job of advertising it. For that type of transportation, would it be worth a consideration of switching to predetermined routes or something at some point in time so that they were more visible or people knew they could flag them down or that kind of thing?
That's the age.
And I know we sit a lot in just a place waiting for somebody to come by and ask for a ride. Would it, would it be worth investigating having them on the move all the time?
That's the age-old question that gets asked off the time. People like that sort of response-driven service. And when they have the circulator route, you know, the grass is greener on the other side many times where, geez, you know, I want an on-demand response. I want to be able to say, I'm going to park here in this Jason Street deck, and I want it to come and pick me up. Or, I'm done with my meal, I want to be picked up and brought back. But I, I think it certainly would be worth exploring to have a more visible circulator route. Right now, I think you've got, you know, your destinations are, one here at City Hall, I believe, where we saw the shuttle sitting out there sort of by your entry-traffic circle there, if you will. So that's helpful. And I think your information on the website for the Greer Shuttle is very helpful, but does everybody know to look for that information in those places? But visibility is always going to take you a lot farther than where you're at today. We did, we saw that shuttle sitting in multiple locations, and the driver was just simply having conversations with passer-bys, you know. It rarely wasn't moving or very rarely did we see it transporting people. So that wasn't a bad approach, but I do think if there were, you know, sort of a more visible route, would probably be your answer there. And that gets, all of a sudden, dangerously, you start getting into this idea of, do we need to have a schedule to where all of a sudden it's going to be at this particular location at 7:13 p.m.? And, you know, what does that look like? So it becomes a little more complicated. And I don't know that you necessarily need, your downtown's not big enough where you need to have that rigid schedule like that. But I think, you know, having it move would probably be an option. Unless where it does sit, if there's some more enhanced advertisement that, here's where you pick it up. So when the shuttle's not there, people know that they can go to that location and be picked up at that location. I think we did see the, the location by the, the fire station does have one of those Windmaster signs there that says Greer Station, or Greer Shuttle pickup area here. But I don't think those signs existed everywhere where the pickup locations were. Could have just been that time of year that we were here, but it wasn't as prevalent as we saw when we looked at the map information on the internet.
Are you aware of, I know on Wade Hampton Boulevard now, for some of the transit route on 29, instead of having the full-size, full-on sort of bus stop with a bench and a covered area kind of thing, that they now have a light on a pole that, I guess, is a solar panel or something that has just a seat on either side of the pole between the larger stops there. Would it be beneficial for us to designate places that are visible, that are not necessarily scheduled stops, but they're making this route hitting all nine of those in a circle at night or something?
I think so. Anytime you can sort of promote or enhance that as a pickup or drop-off area, I think that's going to go a long way. If anything, it's going to create more brand awareness that, oh, now the shuttle does exist. I didn't know it existed because as I walk around or drive around, I see these little mini-stations popped up all over the place. It certainly makes sense, sort of works for you instead of you working harder for it.
Others?
I know right now, we use an app for the, for the carts. Are you seeing any one, kind of going off what Mayor says, where if we've got designated locations where if they've got a button on there that they push, it just alerts the drivers, like, you know, there are people at this location? Is anyone using that type of technology?
I've not seen that, per se. And most of the apps are sort of real-time apps that I've seen tied to more of a circulator route, if you will. And that's, of course, funded by a larger transit entity, if you will, not something like the Greer Station Shuttle itself. But, so where now, real-time, you can kind of see that little dot move around the map, and you know that it's just around the corner. You know, that's sort of, we see a lot more of that versus something what you've just described there.
Okay.
Not saying it wouldn't work, but...
Like a crossing, though, you could have a pole with a light on top of it. If you push the button, the light starts spinning or come on. I mean, you know, that wouldn't be a big deal.
For me, we've used the app, and I don't have the app downloaded anymore. For me, we've used the app, and I don't have the app downloaded anymore because it's just a little challenging sometimes to use that app. And just curious if there's other options that may be a little more efficient where, you know, you get the same effect, but not necessarily an app.
Yeah. I think, as the Mayor described, I think sort of promoting that enhancement of those stops would be a good first step, just to see what sort of a difference-maker that makes. It's just that visual cue, if you will, that I'm in the right place. And that sooner or later, there's going to be a shuttle that does come by here. Maybe there's some information, instructions on a sign that says, you know, it operates during these hours, and it's got 20-minute headway time, so if you don't mind waiting every 20 minutes, it'll come around. You know, maybe it's less than that, maybe it's a 10-minute headway time during peak times.
Questions, comments? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, folks. Appreciate it, too, yeah.
Since I butchered your name, Katrina, do you want to add anything to the end of this conversation?
I think Jim's done a great job, folks. I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay. Well, thank you, ma'am. With that, we stand adjourned.